All right, then I'm gonna call the Wednesday, November 18, 2020, meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Ms. Chester, excuse Mr. Cho, not here. Ms. McGlaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Roche?
Here at 7:05 PM.
Ms. Yuckman is not here. Mr. Warbrand?
Here.
And Mr. Welch?
Here. I believe we do have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
All right, at this time, I would ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Does everybody have a copy? Are there any changes or errors in the minutes? I don't have mine with me, but I know, one, as far as who was present, Mr. Warbrand has listed twice, and I'm not listed, so that's, one of those Warbrands should be changed to Welch.
We can make that change.
All right. As I said, I don't have it in front of me. I'm not aware of any other changes, any other board members aware of any changes that need to be made to the minutes? If not, we'll call for motion at this time?
I move that we approve the minutes with that one typo to be fixed.
Okay, it's been moved to approvals or second?
Second.
All right, can we have a roll call then, please?
Ms. McGlaughlin?
Oh, did you not hear that? I'm sorry, it was he.
No. Okay, yeah, thanks. Zoom, I tell ya. Okay, Mr. Roche?
Yes.
Mr. Warbrand?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes, the minutes are approved. Are there any communications?
We did have three different communications for the for the conditional use permit for the owner occupied bed and breakfast. One of those was in your packets. A second one came in late this afternoon, and then a third one came in probably about half an hour ago. Kat received those. Kat, did you want to summarize, or Harvey, did you, did you receive those recent ones? I think Kat emailed them out, but you might not have access to email.
I'm having email issues. I was hacked earlier this week, so no, I don't have those.
Okay. Kat, would you mind summarizing those latter two?
Sure, I'll give a brief summary. There were three communications received. All were in oppositions to the request with general concerns for traffic, noise, and the potential for parties. If the conditional use permit were approved for an owner occupied bed and breakfast at this location, I'm paging through them right now. I believe the last received communication cited some sources of Airbnbs in other communities with generally the same awareness of the potential for noise, increased traffic, or parties at Airbnb locations. That pretty much summarizes the three communications.
Ms. Chester is now with us. Hi, Joanne. All right. At this time, then, we are ready for new public hearings. And I would call ZBA-2020-C-02, a request by Karen Myers for a conditional use permit to allow an owner occupied bed and breakfast to operate at 2914 Susan Stone Drive in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes. So this is a request by Karen Myers to allow an owner occupied bed and breakfast at 2914 Susan Stone Drive. One additional condition, oh, I'm sorry. There was a Zoom technical difficulty. One additional condition has been added to the conditional use permit since the staff report was written, and I'll elaborate more on that when we get to the conditions. So the property is located in the Myra Ridge subdivision, south of Windsor Road and east of South Myra Ridge Drive. Nearby are single family homes and South Ridge Park to the south. This is a zoning map. The property is owned R2 Single Family Residential and is surrounded by R2 zoning. Owner occupied bed and breakfast require a conditional use permit in the R2 zoning district. The home was originally approved and built in 1995 with a second living space, and this is a correction to the staff report. The staff report said that the home was built and then renovated to include this second living space, when in reality, it was actually approved in 1995 to be built with the second living space. The previous owner used the second living space so that a father could provide live-in assistance to his son with disabilities. The conditional use permit now would allow for the second living space to be used as an owner occupied bed and breakfast, not as a long-term rental. The applicant would like to use this space for short-term rentals through Airbnb. This is the floor plan of the home as it exists now. It shows the two separate living spaces. The owner lives in the blue outline space on the left, and the orange outline space would be used for an Airbnb space. An initial building inspection was done earlier this week to make sure that the home met all code requirements, and the property would not be rented for long-term occupancy and would generally continue to function as a single-family home. This is the front of the home from Susan Stone Drive, and this is the entrance that Airbnb guests would use to enter. Four guests would be allowed to stay at a time, and parking will be available on-site in the applicant's driveway, and that is a condition of approval as well. This is the east entrance of the home, and this is the entrance that the applicant uses to enter her living space. If the conditional use permit is approved, the applicant plans to impose restrictions on the Airbnb guests, including not allowing guests to bring pets, host parties, or smoke on the property. And staff recommends applying additional conditions to the use, including that while the property is being rented, the owner must be present, that the conditional use would expire when the property is sold or transferred, or after six verifiable nuisance complaints. The new condition that was not included in the staff report is that the house must remain a single-family home unless a separate conditional use permit were to be approved that would allow it to function as a duplex. And in that case, the home would need to be renovated to meet the International Residential Code for Two-Family Residences. The last condition of approval would be that the property will be subject to regular city inspection. Staff found that the application meets the requirements for a conditional use permit. The home has functioned inconspicuously as two separate living spaces since before the applicant purchased the property, and it is already designed to function as this use without causing a nuisance to the area. The conditional use permit would allow for short-term rental rather than long-term occupancy, which is already allowed by right through the rental registration program. The applicant would accommodate occasional guests, but the property would generally continue to function like a single-family home. The zoning board of appeals has the following options. Approve the conditional use permit as submitted. Approve the conditional use with any additional conditions or requirements, or deny the conditional use permit. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use with the conditions outlined in the staff report and the one additional condition that was talked about tonight. And the applicant is also here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Hearing none.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
One of the comments submitted said something about the listing of the or the letter to local homeowners had some incorrect information in it. Is that anything that we need to worry about? Does this have to be relisted or republicized in any way? I was just curious about that comment.
So I'll speak a little bit to that, and then Kevin can follow up with any additional details. Three notification requirements were sent out, the first being the News Gazette legal ad, which I double-checked, and it does include the correct URL and the correct meeting date, along with all of the contact information for staff. The second notice requirement is a public hearing sign, which is on the property. That was not written to and is not typically written to include the Zoom information or the link to the website. So that, I don't believe there was any error there. And as far as my records have shown, there was no error with the notice requirement that was sent out to the neighbors. I don't know if there was with the physical copies, but as far as all of my digital records show, the URL was correct. And Kevin can follow up with any detail if necessary.
I have no need to follow that up. That was a detailed response. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? Hearing none. Is the applicant or anyone, on behalf of the applicant, wish to be heard?
I see Karen Myers in the attendees list, and Z may be her son.
Oh, there, okay.
Hello, can you guys hear us?
Yes.
Yeah, Karen, and this is Jake Myers and my mom, Karen Myers. I'm here just listening in, so we're happy to answer any questions, and we're certainly excited about this opportunity and definitely want to be a partner for Urbana and follow all the right rules and regulations and be good for the community, so.
Okay, slow down for a minute. Ms. Myers, do you wish to make any statement?
Sure, this is Karen Myers, and.
Let me swear you in, then. Do you promise that any testimony you give here tonight before this board will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, this is Karen Myers, and thank you for taking the time for this meeting, and like Jake said, I'm excited for this opportunity and happy to do anything that I need to for compliance. And just hoping for the opportunity to come my way, and if there's any other questions, let me know.
Ms. Myers, have you seen the letters in opposition to your request?
I've only seen, there was only one that I believe was in the actual notes. Maybe more came in. Kat, I don't, I just saw the one, and it was regarding maybe noise and parking, traffic.
Do you wish to comment or address those concerns?
I don't think that it'll be any problem. I'm not, I'm not allowing more than four people. And, I mean, my assumption would be there would probably maybe be one vehicle at a time. I'm not going to allow any parties. It'd just basically be guests that, you know, if we have, we get through COVID and we start having events again, it would just be, that's when I might have people come. Right now, I don't even know if I will with the COVID situation.
Are there any questions from any member of the board to the applicant? Hearing none. Kat, is there anybody in opposition present or just the letters?
No one who wrote in a letter of public input, I see, in the attendees list, but there could be others.
We do have someone named Z on the attendees list, and I don't know if Z wants to unmute and identify themselves. I'm not sure if they're proponent or a proponent.
Hi, I'm Z. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't mean to be Z. That's just how I come up in Zoom. This is Alan Craig, and I did write a letter. And I'm hoping you actually read the letters that you received instead of just the.
Mr. Craig?
Yes, yes.
Do you wish to formally address the board?
Yes.
All right, then I have to swear you in.
Okay.
Do you swear affirm that any testimony you give tonight before this board will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes, true. I do.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, my main thing that I wanted to say here is that I want to, I received the letter, and I want to assert under oath that absolutely the letter contained the wrong URL. So there was no way to find that website until I spoke with Kat today. And this evening, well, not this evening, you know, about 5 o'clock, I bumped into one of my neighbors, and they asked me if I knew anything about this, and I said, yeah, and they said, well, they had intended to look at this, but they had gone to the URL and couldn't find the website. So I know that person was going to have addressed this, but couldn't get there, and I said, well, I got the URL, but I was on my way out and couldn't go back and get the URL and that sort of thing. So there was no URL on the sign, there was no URL on the website. I went to the website all day, and it didn't give the Zoom coordinates. So I'm mostly concerned at the moment that the neighbors had no chance to read the document and had no chance to even know how to get to this Zoom meeting tonight. I said in my letter that I felt like I want to give the person a fair shot. You know, I'm all for if something's a good idea, but I did some research, and everything I read said, you don't want this in your neighborhood. But I want, I wanted to hear this person, and when I wrote the letter, I had no Zoom coordinates, so I didn't think I would be able to attend. So I wanted to hear from the owner what the potential upsides for the neighborhood are, because everything I find, and I quoted some things from like the National Realtor Board and from some other sites that I saw in my letter, and they're pretty negative, and I'm sure that ours isn't, you know, those are always going to be the horror stories. But neither the the application, nor my conversation with Kat, nor anything I found, said how this is a benefit to the neighborhood to do this.
Do you have any further comments you want to make?
Well, that's, I think if people read my letter, that's what I want to make. I don't have my letter in front of me right now. So I think there's a concern, my neighbor said, if I could find a way in, to please express that she's really concerned about, again, having strangers in the neighborhood, because there's no real reason for strangers to be in the neighborhood, and that there's a lot of kids in that very area that are always playing out and running across the street and that sort of thing. And so the neighborhood knows where the kids are, but outsiders don't necessarily know as well. And I did see one article that specifically said that these are especially a problem in university towns, because they tend to be used like on game events and other events at the campus, and alums come back, and then they invite their alum friends to the B and B, and I recognize fully. I said in my letter, I applaud the applicant for going through this process as opposed to just doing this and then not telling anyone and not following any rules. But like, so that, you know, she said there's only going to be four at the most there, but those four generate, you know, at a homecoming or something, they're going to have friends, and that's going to give them a space to meet and things like that, and what defines a party? You know, if they have friends over to this event, you know, what's going to happen there, those sorts of questions. And those were the same things that my other neighbor expressed and asked me to express if I did come to the meeting.
Are there any questions for Mr. Craig, right?
Yes.
Are there any questions from any members of the board from Mr. Craig? Hearing none.
I'll ask a question.
Okay, go ahead, Ashley.
Mr. Craig, I'm just curious if the conditions put on the permit reassure you at all as to the operation of the Airbnb?
Oh, they do, oh, am I still on? Yes, they help immensely. I'm glad for that. The one that concerns me is the parking, because the applicant said in the application that there was street parking available. You guys said onsite parking, and so I think it would be good to clarify street parking versus in-the-driveway parking, just to make that clear. And then the question of, you know, a maximum of four, what does that mean? Does that mean, to me, that means four overnight, that they could have, you know, their friends over to watch TV, watch the game on TV, or after the game party, or that sort of thing. What's that mean, a maximum of four? Does that mean four on the premises maximum ever? And again, I want to say hello to the applicant, because I, I'm trying to, I want, I hope this works for everyone, but I, given what the application said and the things I read with no no explanation of how this benefits the neighborhood, or Urbana, or the town, you know, what's the upside? There's a lot of downside risks. And I'm, again, it opens the gates to others as well, right? There's no businesses that draw customers in the neighborhood. So it opens the gates for other people to have things like this. Are we going to allow, if there, if five more people want to do this, are we going to do this?
I can clarify the parking situation if that's okay. So originally on the application, Karen Myers did note that street parking is available in the neighborhood, and that anyone who visits the Airbnb would be able to park on the street. We had a few conversations about this, and seeing as she has a two-car garage and a driveway, we've made it a condition that parking would be available on-site, and that she would be able to work with the people staying at the Airbnb to configure where they will park in the driveway so that she can move her car in and out of her driveway and garage. That was something that was figured out after the application was submitted, so the app, or so the condition is the most up-to-date solution for that.
Right, but what about any guests that the people staying at the B and B have over? Do they have to park in their driveway?
Karen Myers may be able to answer that question a little bit better. I would say that with parking available on the driveway, that would be reserved for the Airbnb visitors, and I'm not sure how else she would want to handle that, but we did make a condition that parking would be provided on-site.
Ms. Myers, do you wish to be heard again?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Hi, Craig, this is Karen, the applicant. I'm not planning on allowing people that are staying the night at the Airbnb to have other guests come. So by maximum of four, it would be four that are, you know, in the group that's, if it's a person that's reserved it, they're not going, I'm not going to allow them to invite a bunch of other people over. I'm not going to allow parties. And if, I don't foresee there being more than one vehicle, but if there was, they would, there might be one car on the street, maybe, if there's one in the driveway and then one on the street, but that's not anything that I foresee happening. I foresee that it would just be one vehicle at the most. If that, does that help answer any questions?
That's your intent. Thank you, yes. I'm just, I feel like, since no one else could come to the meeting, but I'm speaking for the whole neighborhood at the moment. I just know that in all the articles I was reading, that that's a very common thing that happens, and I don't know, is that a term of the contract that they cannot have anyone over? Because like if I stayed at an Airbnb in a town where I knew people, I'd say, hey, come on over. How are the guests going to know that can't happen?
Yeah, I'm not sure, sorry, Craig, this is Jake, Karen's son. I've kind of been helping her with some of this stuff, but.
Jake, hold on.
Yep.
I'm going to have to swear you in.
That's fine, go ahead. I understand.
Do you promise that any testimony that you give before this board tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes.
Go ahead.
When we're drafting this Airbnb listing, you know, a couple of things. First, this house is configured uniquely, and my mom plans to live here for a long time and have the occasional guest in that second half, so it's just as important to her as it would be the rest of the neighborhood to not, you know, she doesn't want people partying late at night and, you know, having noise, because she's sleeping right next door to it. You know, she doesn't want a bunch of people parking in the street either. I think that her target audience is not partiers, it's not going to be a group of people that are going to do some of the stuff that maybe would be caused not-so-good environment for the neighborhood. But how do you prove that that's never going to happen? I think that her listing is going to be a good way, you know, the way that she encourages guests and some of the rules that she's going to have on the Airbnb listing. Again, this is new for her and new for us. I think that part of the, it's going to be a learning curve, and she's going to be able to make changes and adjustments. But she wants to be a partner and a good neighbor, and if it becomes a problem for the neighborhood, I think it's going to be a problem for her, and she's not going to want to do it anyways, long-term, if some of this stuff is there. I did, I do remember there's something about six violations can cause the permit to be kicked out, so if it does become unruly and people are reporting it, it sounds like there might be a mechanism in place to protect the neighborhood at that rate.
Okay, thank you. I am speaking, like I say, on behalf of some, I know there would have been other people here had the information been available to them. And so, yeah, in my letter also, I cited articles that talk about the depreciation of homes and that some communities are now requiring homeowners disclose if there is a B and B in their neighborhood when you sell it, just like you have to expose if you have radon and things like that. And so that's my biggest concern is when it comes time to move, that, and that's considered a bad thing to have to disclose. And so I'm speaking sort of for the sake of the neighbors that might help, might be worried about it. I've known that house forever. I've been here for over 20 years, right? And so like I say, in talking with some of the other neighbors, they are against this, but they've not heard your side of this, and so I just, I wish that they would table this until the neighbors could have an opportunity to have come to this meeting. I got the URL right before, or I mean, the Zoom coordinates right before this meeting. And so I couldn't pass on to other people. That's my biggest thing here, is that I feel like the neighborhood didn't get their feedback in.
Would the applicant be willing to let us continue this to the next meeting and just give everybody a chance to have some input? And I mean, if you have a chance to talk to your neighbors, also, you know, reassure them of some of your plans outside the meeting, that's something you can talk about with them and see, they can give us also input on discussions they've had with you, too.
Sure, this is Karen. Sure, that's fine. I don't know how, I guess part of the challenge is I haven't been able to talk with a lot of the neighbors because of COVID. It's not like I can go knock on their door, hi, but I mean, I've chatted with, I mean, It's not like I can go knock on their door, hi. Um, but I mean, I've chatted with, I mean, neighbors from a distance and they all seem so friendly and nice. Like I love, I absolutely love this neighborhood. And like Jake said, I, I wouldn't want to do anything at all to, to, uh, you know, make the neighborhood not safe or not, you know, I wouldn't want the value of my house to go down because of an Airbnb, you know. So there's, I'm not doing this to try to cause anything like that to happen at all. So, um, I, I'd be, I'm willing to do that. I guess I just don't know how, how do we make that happen?
No, it, it's fine. I think this is a situation where just maybe some more time for everyone to talk will give us all some more clarity and will give us more input as a board. Uh, so Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, um, move that we continue this to our next meeting. And put it on the table for now.
Um, can, can you make sure that the neighbors are notified with how they can get the, the application and things like that?
Yeah, and I assume, do we, I don't think I need to include in there that the city staff will make sure to, um, help, help the applicant get out the correct information so that they can, uh, get the meeting again.
And I'll second the motion. Yeah, that's no problem. We can, we can send out additional letters and make sure that everything is correct in there.
Thank you very much. I'm not, I'm not out of the gate totally opposed. I just wanted to make sure the neighborhood got their input because several people expressed that to me as well as to make sure that you saw all the input.
And since the applicant is in agreement with the continuance, that is what we will do. However, Mr. Craig, I believe, uh, one thing I think needs to be reemphasized, this conditional use permit, as I understand from what the, uh, conditions that the city is going to attach to it would not be, uh, the Airbnb would not be able to, uh, be part of any sale of this house. Isn't that correct, staff?
Yes, that is correct. It would be terminated upon transfer of property.
Right, so I just wanted to correct that, Mr. Craig, that I thought you said that, it might diminish property if it could be sold to others.
No, no, what I, what I was saying, what I was saying was that the Board of Realtors, uh, that I had seen articles saying that other communities are requiring, like me, to disclose that there's one in the neighborhood when I go to sell my house.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. All right.
Yeah, the same way I have to disclose if there's radon or.
I, I got it. I thought you, okay, I misunderstood. I stand corrected.
Thank you.
All right, then, um, with no objection, ZBA dash 2020 dash C dash O two will be continued to the next meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Would be Kevin.
It's, uh, December 16th.
Okay, until December 16th. Thank you, Ms. Myers. Thank you, Mr. Craig.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. At this time, we'll call for hearing ZBA dash 2020 dash C dash O three. A request by Anthony Donato for a conditional use permit. Construct and operate multiple principal structures on a single parcel at 1806 Airport Road in the IN dash one light industrial office zoning district. And we have a staff report, please.
Yes, I will share my screen with you. And turn my own video off to stabilize things. This is a request for a conditional use permit by Anthony Donato, who is the contract purchaser to construct and operate a data center complex at 1806 Airport Road. This complex would include three arrays, each comprised of data center structures, a set of solos to provide power to the data centers and ancillary electrical equipment. Mr. Donato has signed a purchase contract with the current owner, Lakey Farms contingent upon zoning approval by the city. The property is a 22 point nine eight acre parcel located north, on the north side of Airport Road, 1,200 feet east of Cunningham Avenue. It's currently used as farmland. A surface drainage swale runs southeasterly from the northwest corner to the southern property line along Airport Road. I will go to some photos and walk you through what the property looks like. This is looking from the south side of Airport Road, northeast across the property. Uh, this is a little bit of a close up looking northeast across the property. Uh, this is the northern property line, which you can see is wooded. Uh, this is looking east. This is also the east property line, which is also wooded. Uh, these are, this is a, a drywall contracting firm on directly adjacent to the property. Uh, this is looking northeast again. On this side, uh, this is a resident property on the west side of the site. Um, this is looking east, sorry, yeah, east down Airport Road to give you an idea of the road construction for its capacity for the, the heavy construction activity that'll be happening. Uh, this is looking west toward Cunningham Avenue, showing the same road and its, uh, capacity. Uh, little panorama view of the property. Uh, this is the north side of the property. Uh, this is a look at where the saline branch drainage dis- drainage tile runs south underneath Airport Road. At this point, it's, you know, pretty definite where the drainage tile is located coming out of the, the culvert. And this is looking straight north. Uh, you can see, uh, where the swale runs along north through the property and then goes northwest towards Mervis Industries. Uh, this is another shot looking northeast. And I think that's about it for the photos. So, uh, you know, going back to the uses, um, it's got farmland to the north and east. This is located in the county. Um, the purple line is the municipal boundary. So these properties to the southeast are in the county. Uh, this is Landis Farms subdivision to the south, also in the city. And then directly next to it is, uh, some additional farmland and over to the southwest is Northwood Estate, uh, manufactured home park. To the west, this is a single family home and this is a store your own, uh, storage facility. We have Mervis Industries here and Stark Excavating, uh, here and I believe up to the north. Uh, the property has been zoned IN one light industrial office since 2013 and was previously zoned IN industrial when it was annexed in 1992. The property's been farmed since at least 1940 and probably since the area was settled. Frasca Field is 900 feet to the west. The nearest run was 1,900 feet away. Two thousand, well, uh, looking at the zoning, this property and the properties to the northwest in the city are zoned industrial. The properties to the west in the county are zoned B three general business. The homes are zoned AG two, um, the farmland and Northwood Estates are zoned R five, which is manufactured home park. The properties to the south in the city are zoned R two, single and two family residential and R one, single family residential. Some of the farmland is zoned R two. And the property out in the county along Cunningham Road is zoned B four and the neighboring AG parcels as well as the drywall contractor and these two single family lots are zoned AG two in the county. So it's a nice, complex system of city and county zoning. The comprehensive land use plan from 2005 describes, uh, this area for future residential use with regional business along Cunningham Avenue and then some light industrial to the northwest. Uh, the uses and zoning and future land use are summarized in the staff report. The proposed use uh, is a data center, which is essentially a centralized location where computing and networking equipment is concentrated, uh, for the purposes of collecting, storing, distributing or allowing access to large amounts of electronic data. You can see the swale running through the site. There would be three arrays. Uh, one to west the swale and two to the right. The red lines are underground, um, electrical main lot, electrical main lines. The white lines are access roads to service the properties, uh, post-construction. The blue squares are the data centers. You can see there are two per array. Uh, the orange is a switchboard and then all of blue are, um, a total of around 20,000 solar panels to provide, uh, energy for the, uh, data centers. They are very, uh, the consumption heavy. Um, so then this would reduce the carbon footprint of the proposed use by generating the vast majority of the electricity they need onsite. The drainage swale and the underground groundwater drainage tile are maintained and owned by the saline branch drainage district. The swale and tile are located in a 30 foot easement, which is most likely unrecorded due to the age of the construction. You know, this drainage tile goes back at least 100 years. Both the drainage district and the neighbors are concerned that the construction of solar arrays may damage the drainage tile as it involves mounting the panels onto metal poles installed into the ground. Staff did meet with the application and his, and Tony Grillo, uh, his engineer and Drainage District Commissioner Gray Greist, Greist, sorry, uh, and the neighbors on November 12th, last Friday, and discussed the proposed construction. The applicant agreed to locate the drainage tile and avoid any construction within the easement. He also agreed to attempt to locate the Weckels drainage tile, um, which brings water from their fields west to the district's drainage tile. And, uh, he, they would attempt to locate that in order to avoid damage to that connecting tile. Uh, if the conditional use permit is granted, uh, the applicant is not permitted to build in the district's drainage easement per that existing easement without written permission. Um, staff did find that the proposed use meets the requirements for a conditional use permit. Those findings are in the staff report. Highlights are that the proposed data center complex is conducive to the public convenience at the location as its low intensity does not require the extensive infrastructure investments that have been made at other established industrial parks to support higher intensity industrial uses. Secondly, the proposed data center complex will not be injurious or detrimental to the IN one district or to the public welfare as it would be located away from high traffic areas and itself not generate additional traffic. Uh, would be designed to generate little noise with the, uh, data centers and electrical equipment located towards the center of the parcel and away from property lines. There would be screening and fences installed between the solar panels and the residential district to the west as well as between the solar panels and, um, Airport Road itself as a public right of way. And thirdly, the proposed stat- data center would conform to the development regulations of the IN one district, including required yards, buffers, equipment heights and screenings. Construction and operation of the complex would comply with all existing easements, including the drainage swale easement and comply with all other applicable regulations, including local building and electrical codes. Uh, in summary, this use would be shorter, quieter and generate less traffic than other potential industrial uses that could go into this site, preserving the essential character of the IN one district, which is surrounded by residential and agriculture. Uh, the findings are summarized in the staff report. We are now looking at, um, the most recent uh, revised site plan, which shows the three arrays. Uh, all of these little rectangles are individual solar panels. You can see the dotted lines are the, um, uh, electrical main lines running along a construction access. Um, the, the applicant proposes to relocate the existing access 70 feet to the east so that they can easily pull in to, um, construct this array and then also to service it. And they propose to add a second access drive, um, and right of way access so that they can install the other two arrays, uh, and therefore not need to cross over the drainage swale. Uh, we are currently checking with Public Works to determine, uh, if there are any issues with those access drive changes. Staff recommends that the zoning board of appeals approve with conditions the proposed conditional use permit. The first condition was there in the staff report that the construction generally conforms to the site plan that you've just seen, except where modified to meet city regulations and also meet drainage district and other easement requirements. This is similar language to that we used for the, um, solar energy installation at the landscape recycling center. Sometimes the electrical requirements need to be tweaked and, uh, with spacing between the rows. So times, sometimes there'll be a little bit of shifting of rows and number of panels after the final design gets done, but it would generally conform to this site plan that you just saw. Uh, staff have add two additional recommended, uh, conditions based on the conversations on Friday with Mr. Donato and his engineer and with Ray Greist, the Drainage District Commissioner, uh, as well as Public Works staff and planning staff. Uh, the first additional condition is that the drainage tile would be field located prior to any construction or earth moving activity. Uh, this would endure that, um, the tile would not be damaged during construction. It could be properly flagged. And then the second additional recommendation is that the district drainage tile easement be increased in width from 30 to 50 feet. Uh, Mr. Greist expressed that the equipment that the drainage district uses is a lot larger now than it was 100 years ago. And they need a width to move those, uh, that equipment around between, um, the, in this case, the arrays of solar panels. Mr. Donato did point out that there are areas in the current site plan where it is more than 50 feet wide and that would not be a problem, uh, to basically make turnarounds in those areas. But, uh, he does not feel that it's. But he does not feel that it's necessary to have the fifty foot wide easement. Along the entire length of the swale. I will mention that you did get a communication today. Which I will summarize. It was basically the notes from the meeting on Friday. This email did express Mr. Greist's concerns for the district's drainage tile. And is formally requesting that this condition be placed on permit to increase the drainage easement from thirty to fifty feet. Other notes of interest are that the applicant would not be able to. Traverse along the tile easement but could cross it for post-construction servicing. That way the tile isn't damaged and also that nothing can placed in the easement. Even including gravel as it would alter or restrict drainage flow. That's the end of the staff report. I'm happy to answer questions. Mr. Donato is here to answer questions. And Mr. Greist, the Drainage District Commissioner is also here as well. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff?
Yeah, what are the current city regulations on installation of solar arrays like this?
So the electrical connections and construction have to follow city electrical code. Which is currently the the international building code, I think it might be twenty fifteen. Zoning requirements are fairly rudimentary. We treat them as mechanicals like a, you know, an air conditioning condensing unit. As it is something that supports the operation of another principal use. Mechanicals are required to be screened between the mechanical and public rights of way. And any residential districts. Hence, the screening would be required between the solar arrays and airport road. As well as to the residential district to the west. That's essentially it as far as zoning requirements. They are also limited to fifteen feet in height. And these arrays are typically eight to nine feet tall.
Okay, um. How does this compare to the solar arrays at the landscape recycling center? Does Urbana have any project this size?
Well, so the project at the landscape recycling center was a project that ran through. Our office. It was a special use permit because that particular zoning district. An electrical substation, which was the most similar use to the proposed solar array. Required a special use permit in that district. In this case, the principal use here is the data center, even though it's. Much smaller in scale, the actual function of what's happened on site is. What's happening in the data center. The solar array is essentially considered an accessory use. And more technically, it's considered a mechanical to help support the operation of the data center. So the data center is being treated as an electrical substation, which is the most similar use that's on. The table of uses. Kevin.
Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I I think if I understood Adam's question, I think he was just asking about the size of it. Like, how does this compare to the size of the the one that's going into the landscape recycling center?
I believe the one at the landscape recycling center is approximately thirty acres. So this is about two thirds of that.
And does Urbana have any requirements for decommissioning when these mechanicals reach their end of life?
We do not have any decommissioning requirements. I would say that, you know, I would treat this similarly to a big box. You know, with no names, a big box store or a factory. You know, we don't necessarily have decommissioning requirements for those large structures or their parking lots either. Specifically, though, for this project, the fact that the solar panels are mounted on. Metal posts that are pounded into the ground. It would be fairly straightforward to remove the solar panels. And pull the stakes out of the ground. The data centers themselves, I believe, are around eight to ten. Or eight foot by ten foot and laid on a concrete slab. Those could be fairly quickly moved out of the way. This is in comparison, say, to the the landscape recycling centers. Array which they are mounted on concrete ballasts which are laid on top of the landfill. And that was specifically because the steel post method could not be used on the landfill because it would. Puncture the liner of the landfill. But as as interim use go, it would be fairly straightforward to, you know, pick this installation up and move it. The the manner of the funding, though, that is happening for this project. Indicates that this project is going to be here for at least fifteen years. I will let Mr. Donato speak to that more though.
Any addition? Yes, Joanne.
I had a question. I thought I heard something mentioned about another. Drainage tile. Trying to locate another one that came into this one.
Yes, so there, I will share the screen again real quick. Pictures are easier to show. To the east. Here, this is farmland. There is drainage tile in this field and. There it's gets collected into one or more, I'll call them collector tiles. And that aisle runs west to the drainage tile. So that the water is taken directly to the district's drainage tile. It doesn't connect to the field tile in this field. Mr. Donato is gonna attempt to locate that collector tile. And, you know, identify where it is in the field so that they can attempt to avoid puncturing it with any. Of the steel posts for the solar panels.
So, so where, where does it run? I mean, I can't.
Sorry, I forgot to hit the screen share button. Okay, so here is the. The name. Agricultural field, the the field tile in this field is collected into a. Connecting lateral tile that runs west to meet with the drainage tile here. And so. Mr. Donato's crew would attempt to locate that tile along this, you know, the east property line. So that they could flag it and avoid it while they're constructing, you know, their own arrays.
Well, since we know it's there, don't we need, I mean, do they have any easement if it goes across this property?
No, this is, that's a private tile. You know, those probably a hundred years ago were handshake agreements. There is no recorded easement for that tile. Mr. Weckel, who farms this land, was at the meeting on Friday with Mr. Donato. And, you know, they came to that agreement that Mr. Donato would attempt to locate it. By trenching along the property line and finding where that tile enters his field. So that is a private. You know, agreement between. The farmer here and the farmer here and those sorts of of verbal agreements. Hey, I'm gonna run my field tile. Through your field. Those are fairly common.
So it doesn't involve the city?
No, it does not. Frankly, the.
If there's a problem, they have to sort that out themselves.
Correct, yes. And and technically, you know, if there's a problem with the the district drainage tile. And the operation of the solar array, that is something that Mr. Donato and the district would deal with. Privately, the city would not get involved with that, except if it was something that involved one of the conditions. That the the Z B A put on the conditional use permit. And so that's why we recommended those two additional conditions which were. Increasing the easement from thirty to fifty feet and also requiring that that. District drainage tile be field located before any activity happens.
Okay. Are there additional questions for staff? Yes, Charles.
Can you tell me how how deep these posts are gonna be driven into the ground to hold the panels?
I cannot, and I will leave that for Mr. Donato or his engineer.
Okay. This finally, reading. Reading that email that you sent us this afternoon about this changing from thirty to fifty feet. It says centered, I believe, is the word. I don't know if it's a term, but it's. You're gonna have like twenty-five feet on each side of the of the drainage tiles. Is that the way to look at that?
That right, correct. They would attempt to, they would field locate the tile. And then the easement would be twenty-five feet on either side of that tile.
Okay, thank you.
Are there additional questions for staff? Hearing none, thank you. The applicant or anyone representing the applicant desire to be heard. Mr. Donato. Would you be sworn? Do you swear that any testimony you give? Tonight before this board to be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
I do.
Thank you, sir. You may proceed.
Good evening. I wanted to start off by thanking Marcus for a very detailed presentation. And for all the help he has done thus far along the way. This project has gone from an idea to a location and with your approval today to begin the permit stages. Solar energy is growing rapidly within the state of Illinois. It represents energy efficiency. And minimizes global pollution. Many of the details regarding the solar farm have already been presented. And if there are any additional questions, I am happy to answer them.
Go ahead, Adam.
Yes, sir. So when these panels reach end of life or if one were to fail. What is the cost of making sure that it's properly recycled instead of putting a landfill?
Whatever those costs would be, we would gladly handle correctly. The the thoughts, a lot of those thoughts come from the large wind farm and very large equipment. These pieces themselves, they are about two and a half feet wide and six feet tall. So if they malfunction, if they break, if they, if if there are any issues, taking them off and replacing them with another one is not. Is not difficult. Over the course of time, I mean fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years, that's all possible. And I'll say I started some of these projects five years ago when the panels themselves we were installing were two hundred and ninety-five watts. The ones we're gonna be using are four hundred and forty-five watts, so you need significantly less of them. So if you think out fifteen, twenty years. You'll be able to replace ten of these with one of them, so they'll take up less space. So it's all just part of, you know, it's it's like improving a building or, you know, putting on an addition or things of that nature. There's, there's always a logical means of upgrading. So I I don't think that'll ever be a, you know, catastrophic event. But if it ever were to occur, it'd be your topic to fix up.
Sure, and how many of these units there are, are there again?
How many are there that I've been a part of or just in general?
Installing as part of your plan?
On here, there are three separate projects. Both are two megawatts on the AC side and three megawatts on the DC side. So a total of nine megawatts of of panels.
How many total panels?
Around twenty thousand.
Around twenty thousand panels. And and the cost of each panel, do you have a ballpark figure? Of the cost of recycling each panel? Because these contain silicon, mercury, a lot of heavy metals. And I just want to make sure that they're gonna be recycled and not just put in a landfill.
Yes, of course. I mean, we would, we would follow all the rules in that sense, but that's not, that's not an issue. The panels themselves, I think, cost a hundred and fifty dollars to purchase. So I I can't imagine the 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 cost of. Recycling them would would be higher than the cost of the panel itself.
And what would happen to the panels if this company were to go out of business?
Well, the panels, I assume, would still operate. I mean, they're they're under warranty for, I believe, twenty-five years. But if the company itself goes out of business, you know, they they can be replaced with other panels and and things of that nature.
So thirty years from now, let's say the panels are failing, the company goes under, what will become of the panels?
As you mentioned, they'd be recycled properly and if we were upgrading or replacing the solar farm itself, that's, that's the course. We would buy new panels and replace these with those. But they would be recycled and it would go through the process.
Cost right now of how much it would take to cop to recycle each panel?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Well, you do not have an estimated cost of how much it would cost to recycle each of these twenty thousand panels?
Correct, I don't have one broken down to a per panel cost, but it it would be an insignificant number that would be affordable. I guess is the easiest way to say that. The the project itself is a very large project, so if there's, it it's not the same as those winds. Like the wind farm ones that are hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars just to take apart. The solar side of it doesn't represent as, I guess, as large of a number or as as many issues as those do.
Okay.
Any additional? Yes, Charles.
So each panel needs a post put in the ground. How deep do we do that? Is that correct?
The posts themselves are between five and nine feet in the ground. They'll do all the testing and and whatnot to to find out the exact length. Six feet is average. You put a post approximately thirty to forty feet apart and then you have. Basic racking that connects those two posts and all of the panels attached to the racking. So on on this entire project, I believe there are fourteen hundred posts. And then racking above ground and then the panels themselves attached to the racking.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions for Mr. Donato? Yes, Ashley.
I was wondering, Mr. Donato, what your position was on increasing the easement to fifty feet? It looks like there's maybe just two or three points along that swale that could be less than fifty feet.
And and I thank you for that question because that is a topic that I did want to bring up to discuss. I am happy to comply and make sure every aspect of the swale itself is. Is 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 protected in that sense. Thirty feet, we're gonna find every aspect of where the swale is. And we're gonna go fifteen feet on each side, which is the current easement, and we'll document that. And when I had this conversation, the concern was about trucks and turning around. As you can see from that layout, there are, there are areas where there's two hundred feet that to turn around. But there are areas where it does get closer and at no point will we pound a post through the, through the swale and and cause a plumbing issue. But if that easement gets extended from thirty to fifty everywhere, it does actually hurt a good portion of our layout. And trying to move those those racks around, we're gonna run out of space to get to the two megawatt. AC and three megawatt DC ratio. So respectfully, I'm happy to to grant an easement in in areas that you you don't see use if that's the actual. Desire was just for turnarounds and the majority will be greater than fifty feet. But it it it's gonna be hard to hit fifty feet everywhere. So if we left it at thirty, just with the, I I think one of the other conditions was I follow the. Something similar to the diagram that I've already presented with the city's approval and going through it all. There will be vast majority of spaces that are significantly larger than fifty feet. So hopefully, that's that's not something that is required.
So do we know, has there been a conversation with the district about that fifty feet and why it was requested? So do we know, has there been a conversation with the district about that fifty feet and why it was requested? Because again, it just looks like there's two or three points where that's maybe in question. So I'm wondering, is the drainage district present this evening or no? I guess that question is for staff.
Ray Greyst from the Drainage District is here.
Okay, then I'll hold my question for him, I suppose.
All right. Are there any further questions from the board for Mr. Donato? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Donato.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard besides Mr. Greyst in favor of this proposal? All right, then, at this time, we would ask for Mr. Greyst to give some testimony before the board. Mr. Greyst?
Yes.
I have to swear, I have to swear in, sir.
Okay.
You swear affirm that any testimony you give tonight before this board would be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any statement that you wish to make or just take questions, sir?
As far as the drainage district goes, our biggest concern is to protect the tile. This is a underground link of drainage of a system that that runs at least five or six miles. And like I said, it's been in the ground probably over a hundred years. And it's going to, in the future, going to need some repair. And I'll just touch on a little bit of the easement part. This tile was dug in by hand back in, back in the early nineteen hundreds, okay? You didn't need much room to dig a tile in by, with a shovel. Well, nowadays, that's a thing of the past. We use backhoes, we need big machinery. And when you work in a thirty-foot space, it's just almost impossible to even turn around in a thirty-foot space. And that's the reason we're asking for the fifty-foot. We're not asking to be given that easement, but just be given that much room to work. That's the reason for the fifty-foot. Okay? And like I said, there was a couple of things we talked about as far as not allowing the, these easements to be used as a, as a construction road. As far as during the construction, because there was actually a tile underground that could be possibly damaged or crushed. And the last thing is, is there, is there any beginning discussion about screening as far as around the perimeter of this this operation at all?
So the zoning ordinance requires the solar panels to be screened from residential districts, zoning districts and any public rights of way. So that would be along the west property line between it and the single-family home that's there and along airport road. Because the properties to the east are zoned agricultural, those do not need to be screened, although there is a wood line there. And the farmlands to the east and north would not need to be screened because they are agricultural districts. The properties to the north are zoned industrial, they would not need to be screened. So basically, required screening would be along the west side, about halfway not near Mervis and along airport.
Okay, first of all, you cannot plant trees, bushes, anything of that on top of a drainage history tile. Drainage history tiles and trees do not, they do not match. They cannot be done. First of all, that will restrict the surface flow of water. You cannot restrict natural flow of water with anything. Number one. Number two, when you plant these trees, the roots go down and they get into our tile and they destroy our tile. So somewhere that opening space where that water runs underneath Airport Road, which when one of your pictures shows the flags, there has to be an opening in there fifty, sixty foot wide that allows that water to come through there. You cannot restrict that flow of water. And the same thing on the northwest side coming out of Mervis, you cannot restrict that flow of water.
I'll let Mr. Donato respond, but I think his plans were for fencing rather than for a landscape buffer.
Well, you, you, you cannot put up a refencing because of the trash, the trash and stuff that comes down through the flow, you'll, you'll be, it'll be plugged up. You cannot restrict that flow of water. That would be like putting, putting a fence across the river. It cannot be done.
And I believe the fencing portion is only the, the western side. The first six hundred or so feet where it attaches to multi, to residential, to the west.
Yes, and that would not be near where the
Yeah. And just from the easement where the two, where the two portions of swale connect, I mean, at the top, I don't have anything within, you know, three hundred and eighty feet by, by ninety feet and then closest to the to the south, there's no, there's no development in, in that area. There's no construction portion in that area. As, as far as trees and whatnot, like it's part, part of the, the solar farm concept, I mean, it's tied to sunflowers and, you know, zinnias and marigolds and milkweed and all the other great aspects of, of the environment. So there, there won't be large trees planted, just with the simple sense of they grow taller and then they provide shade and shadows. So, you know, around the one portion that faces the residential side, that would be a better look, but that's nowhere near the swale, so I don't think that'll be an issue in that sense. But we will go out of our way to comply with everything being requested as far as finding the exact location of this and granting that easement and granting, quite honestly, looking at our, our design, a lot of space. It's just to say it's fifty feet everywhere will be much more difficult than granting a lot of space and making sure everything is within thirty, at a max and a minimum of thirty feet away.
Well, we need, in the, in the skinny areas of your design, we need at least fifty feet. Like you say, the rest of the area is wide open. There's a lot of open space, so that's not a concern. It's just in your skinny areas of your design. Does that make sense? I mean, is that?
Which, which are the skinny areas?
Well, I, I don't have the map in front of me. In, in the areas where your, your panels narrow down through the swale. I don't, I just said, I don't have that map.
That's the concern. If that goes from thirty to fifty feet, that's going to be very difficult for us to, to migrate the panels so that they accompany that. If, if that makes sense, there's, there's nowhere else for me to physically move them to.
Okay, but like we discussed today, we discussed today out on, on the ground, the swale and the tile are probably not in this exact same location. So you're going to find, once you locate that tile, the tile is not going to be where the swale is. So you're probably
Right, and, and we'll modify our design based on the GPS of, of every aspect of that. I, I've looked at aerial photos from the last thirty years and, and nothing seems to have moved, but once we have the GPS that sees that, then our, our design will follow it, but it's, that's my only request. I'm, I'm happy to comply. I'm happy to give thirty feet everywhere. I will give greater than fifty feet in ninety percent of the locations. I just don't see why the ability to turn a vehicle around is required everywhere when I'm, I'm doing that in the majority of the space, but I leave that topic up to you guys. I will, I will do my best to get there.
We have to dig up a tile and replace it. We need room to work. That's a thirty-inch tile that'll go through there. Twenty-four to thirty, I'm not exactly sure. Like I said, all I'm, all I'm trying to do is protect our tile and be able to work on it.
Ashley, was your question addressed?
Um, well, I have a little clarification on the same question.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Greyst, do you clarify that you don't necessarily need a fifty-foot easement, but you need fifty feet of space? What's the difference there that you're talking about?
Mr. Greyst?
We legally have a I'm sorry.
Why don't you ask again, Ashley?
Um, so I was just asking, you had said you need fifty feet of space, but not necessarily a full fifty-foot easement? Can you clarify what the difference is that you're, that you're distinguishing there?
We have a thirty-foot legal easement through that space. Based on the tile, fifteen feet on either side. And like I said, with that easement was written, that tile was dug in by hand.
Right.
No, no big machinery, no big, anything to operate with. Well, nobody works with a shovel anymore. They work with backhoes, they work with heavy equipment. Thirty, thirty feet of space to operate in is really difficult. And the last thing I would like to do is hit a solar panel or something of that nature when we're trying to operate, work on a tile. I'm just asking for a little bit more room to work. I'm not asking for them to give us in writing an easement fifty feet wide, just giving us a little more space. Does that make sense?
It does. I think maybe my question is for staff, what that means for conditions like, A, do we have control over the easement per se? Or is that kind of a separate issue decided by a separate body? And B, I guess what would the legal difference be between an easement and just, you know, clearance or something?
Um, I think as staff, or at least I would see, the difference would be saying you need to give a fifty-foot wide easement as a condition. Then I would hope that a easement would be actually drawn up and recorded, would go on the site plan, and then we would go from having an unrecorded easement to having a recorded easement that was fifty feet wide. From the fifty feet of space needed, you could make, but not have it actually be a fifty-foot wide easement. You could say something along the lines of the site plan needs to be revised to show at least X amount of space between the swale, excuse me, between the tile and where the equipment starts. And knowing with a high probability that the place that the swale is shown on the site plan right now is going to change once that field, that tile is field located. One would be a function of the recorded easement being changed from thirty to fifty feet. And the other would be the site plan simply would show a wider space, but that the easement that's on the site plan would still be thirty feet.
Okay, I have one further question, and this is from Mr. Greyst. The fifty feet, is this, do you really mean twenty-five from the center of the tile?
Yes, twenty-five, twenty-five feet on each side from the center of the tile. Do you understand? I mean, the, the tile would be the center, twenty-five feet on either side.
The total feet of space between, within fifteen feet of the center of the tile, but then on the other side you had a hundred feet. Would that still be sufficient or you need the full twenty-five feet from the center of the tile? Does that question make sense?
Twenty, twenty-five feet on either side.
Okay.
Are there any additional questions for Mr. Greyst or Mr. Donato at this point? Yes, Charles?
Uh, yes. Uh, for Mr. Greyst, this has been farmed, is that correct?
Yes, as long as I've been around Champagner Band, that's been forty years.
Uh, could you, do they like not put plant crops on the swale? Did they go around that or did they, how did that work?
They farmed through it for as many years as I've been around.
So they took a tractor right over the swale and over the tiles? Now that you're saying that you don't want any trucks over, is that correct?
Well, there's areas that that tile is very shallow.
It, it, when was the last time you had to repair that tile?
Uh, I cannot tell you that. I've only been around six years as a commissioner.
Okay. And so you don't, we don't really know how deep it is either then, I suppose.
It, it varies. I can tell you that much. It varies. Out by the road, it's only three foot deep. Back in the field, I have no idea.
Okay, but really, the farming, the plowing and that never disrupted any of these tiles?
Not lately.
Not in your experience. All right, thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Greyst? Any additional questions for Mr. Donato? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Is there any one present who wishes to be heard in opposition to the applicant's proposal? All right. Hearing none, then I believe we're ready to call the question.
Can I, I guess, can I ask the staff?
Yeah, go ahead.
Were all of the concerns met within, for, that we're, that we've been talking about for the easements that we've been just going over? Have those, were all those concerned in the, in the site, in the, I don't even know what I'm saying. In the conditions that you wrote as recommendations?
Yes, the conditions that were made, sorry, the, the recommended conditions that were made were to feel locate the tile and then to put, to increase the easement from thirty to fifty feet. Those were weighing towards the drainage district's benefit. And, and essentially, everything else that the drainage district brought up was kind of verbally agreed to. No construction traffic in the easement. Post-construction traffic would be limited to crossing the easement, not running along it. And so I, I will say that the additional conditions were really heavily weighted towards the drainage district. And, and I told Mr. Donato that he would have the opportunity to respond to not wanting to have easement to be increased to fifty feet everywhere. I'm sure if areas wanted to be granted where those, a fifty-foot width was located every so long along the swale, staff could help the parties figure that out. But it sounds like from what Mr. Greyst said, you can never know where a tile is going to break, so it might not be near where one of, one of those existing wide areas.
Got it. Okay.
Joanne, did you have a question, Joanne? You're muted, Joanne. You have to unmute. There you go.
I just had dogs coming through, barking.
I saw you waving your hand. I didn't know.
Take, take them away.
Are there any additional questions for staff? Or Mr. Donato or Mr. Greyst by anyone? Yes, Charles?
Uh, if Mr. Donato is there, could I ask him a question, please?
Go ahead.
Uh, sir, let's say that they located a, a break in their tiles. Would it be possible for you to remove solar panels once they're in service to help give them more room to work on those tiles? Is that just crazy?
No, that's, that's a hundred percent relatively easy to do. I mean, they clip on and they're screwed on and they're not going to get blown off or anything like that, but it is very easy to put them on and take them off. And we can grant them extra space if, if it comes down to that, to a specific portion of the swale being broken.
Okay, and then, like you said before, your metal, your metal rods are, I can't remember how many feet apart, but it's quite a ways, right? So there might be one on the exterior there that you could remove that also at that point?
Pulling the post up would be a little more difficult. And then putting it back and getting the equipment to do that would in general be more difficult. But creating space in general, I mean, this, this is probably like an eight-inch by eight-inch post, like a nail in the ground. I don't think that would, would create that much of a, of a difference if it was actually within the fifty-foot range. It, it's also important to understand that the, the rack, the, the final post tends to have some spacing of, of racks above it. So the So the posts themselves won't be as close to the swale. Yeah, and then and from an equipment, nothing, we're not going to drive anything over it. Like, we're we're building those two roads to bring all of our supplies and all of. Like the semis that deliver and all of those things, uh, they won't go anywhere near the swale. That's why we're adding a second entrance. Um, so we're not going to damage it. We'll we'll do everything possibly we can that uh, that that. That makes this process easier. Um, I I'm not a hundred percent sure why this was tied to conditional use because the the panels themselves. Comply with with the zoning for this this property. It was just having very tiny data center, but they are multiple. So instead of putting them all in one space, we have three different service areas, and and that's the topic to discuss, and that doesn't impact. You know, the the swale in any way, so. We will grant lots and lots of space. We will happily work with them at at any time. Anything we can do, we will do. And we'll grant fifty feet literally in ninety percent of this project. It's just there are a couple areas where that does become a construction headache. All the rest is up to you.
Any member of the board have any additional questions? Yes, Ashley.
Well, I guess now I'd like to know between the two parties if that's satisfactory, that thirty feet. You know, except for in the case of repairs. You know, if if equipment can be removed, if that's acceptable to both parties. I mean, it sounds like Mr. Donato is open to that. Um, Mr. Greyst, does that sound workable to you if there was, you know, a situation where you needed more space within that fifty feet? And um, could have, you know, some of the solar infrastructure moved for the purposes of working on this on the tile?
Well, the the thing of it is, he he's got his structure, his his plans laid out, and we don't even know where the tile is yet. So none of this can be finalized until we locate the tile.
Right.
So this is all still up in the air as far as the final, the final layout. Unless I misunderstood. So. We're arguing over ten feet when we don't exactly know what we're gonna have a plan start with. Is that, Marcus, is that correct?
So the 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 recommendation was written to give the flexibility for. Modifying the site plan to meet city regulations and. Drainage district easement recommend um, requirements. Uh, so. If locating the field tile showed that it was five feet more or the other, the site plan can be changed. To acknowledge that and then to shift the solar panels from that. To meet that, you know, thirty-foot easement requirement. And then to give the applicant the information he needs to cite the panels in such a way. That they would able be able to be removed to provide that, you know, fifty-foot wide. Area for future service. Um, so. The the condition, um, sorry, the recommendation was written. Generally enough to allow staff to handle any revisions necessary based on the location of the drainage just tile.
What I'm saying is that 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 the swell in the tile could be fifty feet off.
Yes, and so, so again, um, you know, as as Mr. Donato pointed out. Conditional use permit is focused on those six data centers. Because the zone ordinance only allows principal structure per parcel. And if you want to place more than one principal structure per parcel or on a parcel, you need a conditional use permit. In this case, he proposes to put six principal structures, the data centers, on a single parcel. That's what he's asking for the conditional use permit for. The solar arrays are mechanicals.
But these mechanicals would, would a norm, if he had one facility, one data center facility. Would he be with this many mechanicals covering this much surface area?
Absolutely.
By right?
Yes, yes, and would not need to come to the ZBA because it's one principal structure. This whole discussion about how close the arrays are going to be to the swale. The city would likely not even be involved. It would be a discussion between two landowners. We are only discussing it because the ZBA has the ability to put conditions on. A conditional use permit. Um, in other cases, uh, we had a special, I'm just going to share an example. We had a special use permit where a, you know, um, one of the cities, Adam, I think you'll remember this. One of the universities, well, sorry, one of the old fraternity houses on seven thirteen West Ohio Street. Wanted to be sold to a new person to have a church and a boarding house in that previous fraternity dormitory. The special use permit only applied to church portion of the construction. It did not apply to the boarding house because the boarding house was permitted by right. Discussion was to be limited to the church portion. In this case, we should probably only be talking about the data centers. Now, that at all being said, maybe that changes how you shift your discussion or not. But I will say, yes, if there was only one structure surrounded by a bunch of solar, a conditional use permit would not be required. And this city would not get involved other than meeting electrical and buildings.
Oh, I I guess I you don't seem to be understanding what I'm saying is. We gotta locate the tile to find out exactly what the plans are going to be. Am I, am I right? I mean, where the tile is, is going to tell you exactly what can be built, how, where, when, why, and what. As far as so many pa- so many panels on this side, so many panels on this side, so many panels on this side, where the tile is. And the tile does not always follow the swell. I tried to tell you that the other day when we were out there. So he he's got his plans built on following the swell. Okay? That's probably going to have to be adjusted because the tile and the swale are not in the same location.
But again, it's it's going to be the distance and the length of the swale. And and you mentioned it was twenty-four or thirty inches, inches, like it's literally the width of one of the solar panels, one of them. So once we find it, if we have to migrate a row of panels, you know, from the south to the north or from the north to the south. That that's not, that that's not of of a material consequence. It's trying to keep within fifteen feet versus twenty-five feet. I mean, ten feet is an entire row. So if you, if we grant fifty feet everywhere. We're going to lose sections of tiles, and it doesn't come down to one or two panels. These are all linked together. Um, they're they're. To 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 bring it out in like layman's terms, it's one inverter has sixteen strings. Each string has twenty-six physical panels. So if we lose the last panel, we lose twenty-six panels. So now you're talking about eighty feet. So by granting that extra distance, if if one panel is over that fifty-feet margin and goes into forty-eight feet. We lose seventy-five, a seventy-five-foot row of panels, because that's what works with the stringing system. So that that's all I'm saying. We, every aspect of this, the majority of it is more than fifty feet. In some aspects of it, when we have this all finalized, when we find this thing that that I I'm amazed is not actually. Marked, like when when you guys figure out when something goes wrong, don't you need to find it? But if if you don't know where it is, we will find it. We will literally line the entire thing, and we will then grant thirty feet by a thousand feet. So you're talking about three quarters of an acre of an easement from a hundred years ago. We just don't want to increase that by half an acre of land that then becomes non-functional to us. That that's really all I'm saying. And and we'll grant and we'll work and we'll do everything we can to keep as much distancing from it. And if we don't have to lose whole strings, that's that's the only time it comes into play. So on this whole farm and all three of these projects, maybe I'm talking about four or five or six different rows. So in in certain areas, certain ten-foot areas, we're going to cross that fifty and go to thirty. That's that's, I guess, the only question or the the only position that I'm taking on it. It's it's doesn't, it shouldn't be required. For this conditional use permit. It's just a conversation we can have, and I'm happy to be, I'm happy to have the conversation, and I'm very easy to get along with. And I will do everything I can to comply with what you're asking. I just don't want to grant a fifty-foot easement across the whole thing when we don't even know where it is.
Okay, you have your thirty-foot, and that that's it, thirty-foot. But I think you're going to be sorely disappointed when you find out that the tile is not in the swell. We'll just, we'll drop, we'll drop the fifty feet. It'll stay thirty, and that's the end of it.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions for any of the parties or staff? Any further response from either Mr. Donato or Mr. Greyst? Hearing, excuse me, hearing nothing else. Are we ready to call the question?
Um, I will move that the zoning board of appeals approve with conditions the proposed conditional use permit in case ZBA twenty twenty dash C dash zero three. For the reasons articulated above and the following conditions, one, that the construction generally conforms to the site plan submitted in this. Application as shown in Project Urbana eighteen thirty County Road eighteen hundred north dated ten twenty-one twenty. Except we're modified to meet city regulation and drainage district and other easement requirements. As we've already discussed, this all depends the actual location of the tile itself. Um. Condition number two, that the drainage district tile be field-located prior to any construction or earth-moving activity. And um, I think that is it.
It's been so moved as there's second to that motion.
I have a question, just a second. Did you want to add the part about no vehicles driven over the swale? Was that a thing there?
It sounded like that was already informally agreed upon. Am I correct?
Then I'll second her mo- her motion, please.
It moved and seconded.
I'd like, I'd like to move um, to amend the motion because I'd like to have some discussion on this real quick. Um, I'd like to add, so we have two conditions right now. Condition three, uh, solar panels that are inoperable or decommissioned shall be recycled in an environmentally friendly manner. At a properly certified facility. And condition four, in consultation with city staff, a decommissioning plan shall be required to ensure that facilities are properly removed. After their useful life, decommissioning of solar panels must occur in the event that they are not in use for ninety days. The plan shall include provisions for the removal of all structures, foundations, and electrical equipment. And a plan ensuring financial resources will be available to fully decommission the site. The applicant shall submit a financial guarantee in the form of a bond in favor of the city of Urbana. Equal to one hundred and twenty-five percent of the cost to meet the requirements of the decommissioning plan. And um, yeah, that's about it.
I have a clarification. With this session, like you mentioned at the end, Marcus. To what extent, I know we can kind of include whatever conditions we want theoretically, but um. Given that the permit is specific to the three sites. I'm wondering about even the second condition or the second and third conditions about locating. I'm sorry, just the second condition about locating the drainage tile. Um, given that that's not what the permit is about. Which also um, have other concerns about the amend, proposed amendment, but I'd like to hear from you just on that to begin with.
The, the tile and the easement are still relevant and germane. To the data centers themselves. The data centers do have to be on the site. Technically, the tile should be located so that the construction of even just. Say they did not put any solar panels up and they just want to put the six structures on the site. There's a lot of wiring and everything. They should still field locate where that tile is so they don't damage that. That, that commission, I think, is absolutely relevant and germane and legal.
Okay. Um, Harvey, do we discuss the proposed amendment or where do we go from here?
I think we discussed the proposed amendments. That's my understanding, but I'm not an expert on the rules. Kevin, is is that correct?
My, my instinct tells me um. Uh, well, my, my first instinct is there should probably be a second, but um, that might be incorrect. Um, Marcus is shaking his head. Yes, I'm trying to look at the um. Uh, in the bylaws to see if there's anything that helps us out.
So um, there was already a motion and a second on the uh, on the motion originally, so. That's what's on the floor right now, unless the motioner and seconder want to take the amendment that Mr. Roush provided as a friendly amendment. Uh, they can. Otherwise, they need to vote on the motion on the floor, which is to approve it as is.
That is incorrect because once a uh, motion is made, uh, then we have discussion over what was moved.
Correct.
As part of that discussion, I, as a board member, am allowed to propose an amendment. Through the item on the floor, and somebody can second it, or it can die from lack of second. I'm putting it out there to see if anybody else wants to discuss this. If nobody seconds it, it dies from lack of second, we move on to the question. I believe that is the way parliamentary procedure works.
I agree with that assessment.
Does the motioner need to accept the amendment as well or just the seconder?
I just need a second. If I have somebody second my move, my motion to amend the previous motion. Then we discuss, we have a discussion over my motion. Otherwise, we move on to just the question and have a vote. So I'm just putting this out there to have a discussion. I don't know where it's going to go. I don't know if this is something we can do. Just making the offer because I have some environmental concerns that I'd like to us to at least think about and have on the record.
All right. Is there a second to Adam's? Motion? Hearing no second, then I believe. Your amendments die then for lack of a second. And we're back to Ashley's motion, which was seconded, I believe.
Yes, I second it.
All right. Are we ready for a vote?
Do we still do discussion or?
Or or you're right, Ashley. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I I'm comfortable with the way we've. Um, the city staff has laid out that this is going to um, protect the drain tile and swale. And it sounds like uh, Mr. Donato is uh, making sure to work with. Uh, with everyone to ensure that it will um, be done properly. So I'm I'm very comfortable with that. I just wanted to say that for discussion.
Yes, Kevin.
Uh, I don't, I don't know if it's proper for me to jump in here, but um, I did want to make sure that something that Mr. Greyst said earlier doesn't get lost. Um, he was talking about screening and not impeding the flow of surface water. Now, the way that the zoning ordinance reads, um, and Marcus, I don't know if you have the map. Or the the diagram that you had put together that I've seen that shows where we would require screening, but. Um, essentially, uh, my my concern is that we would require a fence. Yeah, there you go. Yeah, there you go. Uh, we would require a fence sort of along that, you know, along airport road to screen these these panels. Um, and you can see where the swell comes in. Um, Mr. Greyst said you you would need it to be open for probably, I think he said sixty feet or so. Um, at least. Um, so I'm wondering if we could, if there could be a condition discussed that would um allow there to be no required screening there so that it would uh, allow for the the flow of surface water because I think that's the only place where that would create an issue.
I'm sure. I I move that um, we add condition three. Uh, the requirement of screening shall be removed in the case in areas where it is necessary for water flow uh, to be protected. Does that work?
I second that. Oh, wait, is that how it works? Do we need to recall it?
No, I think we can vote on this amendment and then it's amended to your motion.
I agree.
All right. So we're calling for a vote now just whether to attach this amendment to motion. Is that right, Kevin?
That sounds correct.
All right. May I maybe have a roll call, please, on the issue of attaching this proposed amendment to Ashley's motion?
Sure, uh, Ms. Chester.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Rouge?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Warmrun?
Yes.
And Mr. Welch?
Yes, that motion carries and will now be attached to the motion made by Ms. McLaughlin. Now, um, do we need to have the um, motion read again? Or is everyone clear on now what's being moved? Okay, hearing no one requesting um, additional comments, then Ashley, why don't you make your motion again, just for clarity?
Okay, um, I move that the zoning board of appeals approve with conditions of proposed conditional use permit in case ZBA twenty twenty dash C dash zero three with the following conditions. One, that the construction generally conforms to the site plan submitted in this application as shown in project Urbana eighteen thirty county road eighteen hundred north dated ten twenty one twenty twenty. Except we're modified to meet city regulation and drainage district and other easement requirements. Two, the drainage district tile be field located prior to any construction or earth moving activity. And three, required screening will be waived in air. Wait, do I need to read three or did we already vote on three?
You can go ahead and read it. We voted to add it too, so go ahead and read.
Okay, and three, that required screening be waived in areas where drainage flow must be protected.
All right, it's been so moved. Is there a second to that motion?
I I'd already seconded that. I thought she was just reading it for clarification. Is she making a whole new motion?
I thought you approved or seconded with just the first two conditions.
I did, but then you just add the amendment on to that. We voted on the amendment.
Yeah, you're probably right. All right. Let's then.
If I need to second it, I will.
Uh, at this time, let's call the um, motion for vote. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Warmrun?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
And Mr. Rouge?
Yes.
And motion carries. Thank you, uh, Mr. Donato and Mr. Grace. Uh, we're now at all business and review of the bylaws. Kevin?
Sure, um, I will try to be uh, pretty quick about this. Um, I'll share my screen here once I find the one of many PDFs that actually has this on it. Okay. Um, so if you will recall, it's been a long time. Um, if you recall back in February, um, the zoning board of appeals riff uh, reviewed the official bylaws. Um, and then we had the pandemic hit and then at the September sixteenth meeting, um, we we had a follow up discussion um, to discuss um, some questions that were raised in the initial discussion back in February. Um, then last month I presented or I I provided an updated version of the bylaws for uh, at the October meeting, but then I was out of town, so I wasn't there to discuss it, discuss the changes. So we pushed it forward to this meeting. Um, so I will share my screen and just really quickly go through um, what those changes. What those changes are. So essentially, they were the same changes that were initially proposed back in in February with some minor, some minor um, a minor alteration, I think, that I made. So yeah, let me take a look. Okay, so we added the section three here that talks about um, attending meetings remotely. Um, so this is uh, everything that's underlined was what was presented back in February. So it says, um, people can attend remotely if there's a quorum physically present. Um, in this version, I struck out this. Um, there was a redundancy here. It says where a quorum of the members of the public body is physically present may cast votes. Um, we had already established up in the paragraph two under section three, that a quorum has to be present for you to attend remotely. So it was redundant to say a member attending remotely where a quorum is present may vote because the only way you can attend remotely is if there is a quorum that's present. I hope that makes sense. Um, and then the other change was me, uh, let's see. Oh, actually, sorry, there is another, um, I guess, not insignificant change that is um, section four, based on the discussion that I had with our legal division after that initial February meeting. Um, our legal division said the ZBA shouldn't be taking any actions, including opening public hearings without a quorum present. Um, so since we should not be conducting any business without a quorum, um, we're proposing just striking section four, which had said that public hearings may be held by less than a quorum. Um, but public hearings shall be continued until a quorum is present. Um, and then a vote could be taken. Um, then the final change was me being a little bit nitpicky, but just for clarification, we had said that we would review or the ZBA would review the the bylaws biannually, which can have two meeting meanings, either that's either twice every year or once every two years. So I just um, was suggesting changing that to once every two years. To be clear. And those are the proposed changes. So um, since I believe since we've discussed this uh, quite a few times, we can, we could make a vote on whether to approve these tonight.
Is there any questions for staff? Yes, Charles.
I might have missed it because I stepped away a second, but uh, what did we did we talk about the time limits that people could uh, talk at the meetings?
Um, no, that so um, are you referring to and I sorry, I wasn't at the October meeting. I think that was discussed a bit there. So you were talking about the um, the new council uh, ordinance that was passed that set some time limits for public um, for the the public, um, the general public input section.
Right, and we had uh, we actually had a person for the public input section who was talking about the four minute limit. Uh, and since we really hardly ever have anybody in our audience participation section, we're kind of wondering about that and getting it confused with the actual testimony of of people like if we have twenty people show up, we've always allowed them to to talk as long as they were being germane to the subject, you know. Uh, we didn't, we didn't have a clock on anybody and at any time. So we and he was wondering, you know, is this just something that's because of COVID and because of Zoom or is this something that's going to happen all the time? Does it need to be in the bylaws?
Well, so the new rules that that city council came up with are are specific to the audience participation section of the meeting. So it doesn't, they don't set any limits on discussion during cases. Um, I think that makes sense. Um, our our legal division. Um, I don't actually have the memo right in front of me, but they said, since the zoning board, especially the zoning board um, is a quasi judicial uh, body, it would not be um, you know, it probably not be legal to limit the amount of testimony somebody would be giving during a case. Um, but the the audience participation section can be limited and that's really what the new council rules were about. Now, you'll see under section four of the bylaws, there's already a limit of five minutes uh, here under um, for audience participation. Um, the the new city council rules would um uh, would supersede this rule. So the the new limit is actually four minutes. Um, I'm not sure if it it probably, since that ordinance is in effect now, I don't know that the bylaws should say anything. They they may just want to be silent on this since we have new rules or at a minimum, they should reflect what the new rules are. So we would want to change the five minutes to four minutes under section four here.
And Kevin, my understanding is that these rules are only for um, online meetings anyway. Is is that not the, is it, isn't that the case?
Um, that is a good question. That's not how I was understanding it. Um, but uh,
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that's the case. It says any person addressing it that appears to cover any person addressing during audience participation, no matter where they are.
I think, yeah, for the for the bylaws, that's correct, but I think Adam, Adam's talking about the the new rules from the city council, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. My understanding was those rules were made for these online meetings that we are having while the governor's emergency order is in effect.
Yeah, let me take, let me take a quick look. Um, I have it up. Um, I'm uh, let's see.
That is my understanding as well.
Yeah.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted clarification on that because that means that, you know, I think our bylaws don't need to reflect anything differently than um, because when we go back, we don't have to want to have to change them again.
Yeah, I I would agree with that then.
I I have a question just out of curiosity. Number two says it's still basically up to the chair to extend that time limit. Um, I assume that would still be in effect regardless of whether it's four or five minutes. Or is that impacted by the this temporary ordinance as well?
Um, that is a good question as well. Um,
That is impacted. I believe it states in the uh, temporary rules that you have to have a vote of the board if I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah, I thought I had them pulled up here, but I pulled up something that is not uh, that's not the full, the full version. Well,
Oh, go ahead.
Um, well, we um, based on the uh, the first case that we heard tonight, um, we will be meeting in December. So rather than um, you know, rather than try and work this out slowly right now, um, I can, I can look more into these questions and then we can get this hopefully wrapped up then next month if if that sounds reasonable.
I would concur with that. Does any have any member of the board have an objection?
No, I um, yeah, I just want some overall clarity on how ev- every single separate board is impacted by this um, new ordinance.
All right, then Kevin, you come back in December with answers to these questions.
I will.
Thank you. Any new business?
No.
Any audience participation? Is there a staff report? No. Right. Any study session?
No study session.
All right. At this time, I would like to uh, wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving. And I move that we be adjourned.